...and you just fumbled the ball because you did not do it. You had the opportunity and you didn't do it. And I think that's how my colleague sees it there, Moore too, and others. You want another bite at the apple? You're gonna go to the parliamentarian, you're gonna go to the council president. They have the football. Now we'll see what the decision is. Thank you.
So you went into the ordinance committee not realizing that you could have that hearing and present your entire case? Is this just a misunderstanding?
No, let me explain to you. Before I got up, before anything was said, Councilman Chata was gonna limit everybody to three minutes, and then someone said five minutes, and he said, "Let's compromise. Everybody's given four minutes."
So you weren't able to fully present?
Exactly. That's absolutely correct.
Yes, I understand.
I wouldn't... Well, the reality is, and I respect your rules, but your rules are wrong. Your council rules are inconsistent with state law.
Point of clarification. The rules of the committee are generally agreed upon by the chairperson. The four-minute rule is for public speaking. It does not include presentations and/or testimony. Those rules are usually relaxed because we realize that not everyone can present during a four-minute period. So the four-minute rule, just as the speakers this evening, it's just to keep the meeting moving for public speaking because we get multiple people that speak on the same issue with the same comments. But the presentation portion has always been allowed more than four minutes.
Well, I was only given four minutes. After the public spoke, there was about 20, 25 members of public spoke. I got up to speak to Carl Ross Crossman, who would traffic, and the site engineer, and Councilman Cato said, "You've had your four minutes." And quite frankly, I fully expected to get a full hearing at some point before the council because it's my understanding of law, state law, is that any committee of any council can't bind an action of the council. Only the vote of the full council has the legal effect of a formal decision. And respectfully, I've never received any kind of a decision from the committee. I always believed it to be a recommendation. And I realize it's coming with a negative recommendation. But I still have a right to put a case on and make a presentation because ultimately, when you go to Superior Court, they look at the evidence. You don't get another hearing in the court. You get a review of the record. And I wanna put all these experts in, so I do get a review of the record. Thank you. Unless there's any questions, I'm all...
Anyone else?
Thank you.
One quick comment. I will not vote to deny this because of the reasons I gave before. I think it's disingenuous not only to the applicant, but to the neighbors. I think you have an opportunity to put some restrictions that you may not be able to do if this should go to court, let alone the legal expenses involved. That being said, clerk, please take the roll. This is a motion. The motion was made to deny, and there's a second.
[Inaudible]
Yes, so a yes vote means you deny the applicant or deny the ordinance. Yes.
Do you want the record read back by the stenographer? The motion, Councilman Varro made a motion to deny, seconded by Councilman Arqueto. That was the last motion, the pending motion that's on the floor. And I will confirm that with the stenographer.
So a no vote means...
No, no. Don't... A yes vote means you're gonna deny the ordinance. A yes vote means you will deny the applicant to make the zone change. Clerk, please take the roll.
Sandbox.
All right. The councilwoman, the motion came out, the motion in the committee was to approve a zone change. It was denied. Counselor, step back, please. The motion was, the ordinance was denied in committee. It came to the full council. If you... No. If you say yes, you want it denied. Yes, yes.
A yes vote means...
You got it.
Yes.
Okay.
[Inaudible]
Yes.
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 No.
No.
The motion passes five to three. Five minutes only, please.
Code of City Cranston, 2005, entitled zoning, change of zone 45-51, soccer and crossroads. This ordinance passed the committee 4-0, I believe, according to the minutes.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? There being none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Why can't they all be that easy? Yes. Yes. The motion passes seven to zero.
Next ordinance, council president, is 12-11-3. Ordinance in amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of City Cranston, 2005, entitled zoning. Zoning Board Review Hearing Procedure. This ordinance passed three to one. There was one dissenter in committee, I believe it was Councilman Donahue. Entertainer motion.
Motion approved.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Excellent.
Okay. Under discussion, Councilman Palte, go ahead, and then I'll...
Thank you, council president. Just looking at the language in this, in the underlying language, it said, "Board members shall be sworn in before the city council. The city clerk shall administer to each member an oath or affirmation to the effect that such zoning board member shall faithfully perform the duties of his or office and shall support the Constitution and the laws of the state of Rhode Island and the United States of America and the ordinances of the zoning code of the city of Cranston." Let me just ask, when does that take place? When they're appointed to the board in front of a city council meeting? Or is it like inauguration? Or when is that gonna be? When does that take place? At the moment of their appointment?
Councilman Stychos is the sponsor. When does that occur?
I'm actually gonna offer an amendment to deal with that question.
Answer the question first, please.
There is no answer. I don't know when it occurs. It doesn't state a time, so they have to be sworn in in order to perform their duty.
Councilman Palte, are you through with your question?
Yes, I'm through, Michael.
Okay. The solicitor would like to answer the question.
Not to take anything away from the ordinance, however, Chapter 15 of the charter states, "Every officer of the city, whether elective or appointive, shall, before entering upon the duties of such officer's respective office, take or subscribe to such oath or affirmation as may be required by the laws of the state or by ordinance, which oath or affirmation shall be filed and kept in the office of the city clerk." So the answer would be before they do their duties, wherever that may be.
So just to understand the councilman's question, your response is, "This is already going on?"
It's already required, whether it's been going on or not. I've never been, I've never had to swear to anything. I've been sworn out a number of times, but I don't know if that counts.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Could I offer, not an amendment to your amendment, but...
Could you use the microphone? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Am I on? Why don't we just have them do one oath of office for the term that they're in? Like, we do as a council. We do, we don't say an oath every time we come to a meeting. So would one oath of office suffice for a term of an appointed official as well as an elected official?
Yeah, I mean, that would make sense also, but the only issue is the zoning board members are appointed for a five-year term, so I don't, can't really tell from that whether you have to do it every year or upon the appointment for once every...
We serve a two-year term, and we only have to do the oath once.
So it would just have to be done when, and the terms are staggered, so upon the beginning of their five-year term, that would make...
Okay. I'm just offering that as a...
Councilman Stychos.
Two things. Because this was given a mixed recommendation by the planning commission, under the city ordinances, if the planning commission opposes something, it requires a two-thirds vote of the council, and if they don't, then all it needs is a majority. So I would like to ask the parliamentarians' opinion or make a suggestion that we vote on this in sections because of the different requirements in three sections?
Yes. I think if you call them different votes, the votes require a different sense.
Okay. So if I could, can I continue?
The only thing, if you continue now, we'll need a motion to amend the rules and then to take it by section, and then I'll entertain a motion for...
Actually, I'm asking, I asked that it would be, that it be divided, and that's actually, that's a ruling of the, I believe, a ruling of the chair, whether it should be divided, and the standard is, does each part stand on its own?
If there's no objection, then we'll take it as...
Motion to suspend the rules to handle this matter.
We're not, you don't suspend the rules for this.
No, I understand. No, I'll allow voting on sections. So what I'll do right now is, we'll, if you remove the motion and withdraw the second, I'll entertain a motion to approve Section 1 of 12-11-3. Motion is second. Now under discussion on the Section 1. Councilman Stychos.
That's really not the issue here. And what I would like to do is propose an amendment that would remove from line 43 the words "the city council" and the period, change the "the" to a small "t," and then in line 44, add the word "who" after the word "clerk." So the result of that would be a sentence that reads, "Board members shall be sworn in before the city clerk, who shall administer to each member an oath, blah, blah, blah." So I'll make that amendment in form of a motion.
Okay. Any discussion on the amendment?
Quick discussion. Can I offer friendly amendment after this to put it at the beginning of their term, like I had mentioned earlier? Can we put that in there?
Councilman Stychos, at this point in time, would you accept a...
Yes.
So your friendly amendment would add, besides his, to line 47, at the beginning of each member's term?
Yes.
For clarification, if the council makes that amendment to this, then the existing zoning board members would not be required to be sworn into office because they're in the middle of a current term, only when they would come up for reappointment. I think your point is you want everyone to be sworn in when this ordinance is passed, I would assume. And then logic, logic, of course, dictates, it says, "Upon assuming the duties of the office," when they're appointed for a five-year term, that's the beginning of their duties. They wouldn't have to be appointed every year.
So make the wording... Otherwise, you're gonna have to do an oath every year, I'm guessing.
No. Yeah, just, I think, I think it's fine without it. Good thought, but...
So are we going...
I think we're just going with removing "the city council" and adding the word "who."
Okay. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
[Inaudible]
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Now I'll entertain a motion for Section 2.
Wait. Council President, I think we need to...
Excuse me, excuse me. Point of order.
That was on the amendment, right? We voted for the amendment.
We voted for the amendment. Now, we'll, under this situation, since we're gonna take each section, I think we'll vote on the entire ordinance at the end as amended. Okay? So we'll go on to the next section.
Mr. Council President, the request was that we vote on each item separately, and I believe the ruling was that we would vote on each item separately because the requirements for passage are different for each section.
Clerk, please take the roll on the Section 1 as amended.
I'm discussing on the section because we have discussion.
Councilman Arqueto.
Thank you, council president. The issue, from my understanding, is we are gonna vote on Section 1 at this time after amendment. And my concern is that, I concur with the parliamentarian, and I don't wanna be in an adversarial position with the zoning board. I don't wanna be in a dictatorial position with the zoning board. However, during the hearing in ordinance committee and tonight, I haven't heard from one member of the zoning board for or against this ordinance. I've just received one letter from Mr. Lapola and his concerns, so if it's not gonna upset the zoning board, you know, I don't have a problem with it. And if they have so much concern, not one member came here to speak for or against it. That's all I'd have to say.
Councilman Favickia.
Just one quick question through the chair, through the solicitor. I assume the solicitor's office has reviewed this. What was the position on this?
On Section 1?
Yes.
That's fine. I think it's already in the charter.
It's already there, so it's, we're essentially just duplicating.
No, the mechanics of it, I would assume that when a new board member goes to a board, that the clerk will go to the meeting and just swear them in at the beginning of the term, I would think, but I don't...
Motion to approve Section 1 as amended?
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. We're under that discussion.
We're already there.
Clerk, please take the roll on the Section 1 as amended. Yes.
[Inaudible]
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay.
Excuse me.
Entertain a motion on Section 2.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Just for clarification, because this question will be raised to me. So this ordinance, basically, passing tonight on Section 1, all existing members that are currently sitting on the board will need to be sworn in to conform to the ordinance, and I will so notify them.
Uncorrect.
On, the way I see it, unless you have...
If the mayor doesn't veto the ordinance.
I just wanted to make that clear and to have it on the record, so that's a question.
Point of information?
Wait a minute.
If the mayor doesn't veto the ordinance, if the mayor vetoes the ordinance, they don't have to be sworn in.
Hold on, hold on. I would assume that unless you have the documentation that's mentioned in the charter, then you would need to do that. If you have documentation that they were sworn in at one time, then you don't need So I would err on the side of caution and swear a mole. Again, Section 2, a motion?
[Inaudible]
The motion is second. Any discussion? Councilman Arqueto?
Thank you, council president. Again, I just wanna reiterate that I hate to see the council in an adversarial position with the zoning board, but not one member of the zoning board came to appear before my committee or this evening to speak for or against this section of this ordinance. So in lieu of that, I'll be supporting my colleague from Ward 1.
I'm gonna call on Pat Crumlin to answer that situation.
Just on that point, the zoning board is not subject to the council other than appointment power. So, you know, it may be that they perceive that as a conflict. I don't know to do that, but, you know, their concern was swearing before the city council, that would put them in a subservient position, and I, Councilman Stychos, took that out so that impression would not be there, at least with the zoning board. But with regard to, they really don't have an obligation to be here on this ordinance.
Can I respond to that, council president? May I respond to that? Sure. Thank you.
Through the chair. Pat, I don't think a member of the zoning board appearing before my committee in testimony is making them subservient to the ordinance committee. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I receive letters as a councilman about zone changes in my ward. I appear before the zoning board. I give a speech either for or against that zone change, and the zoning board decides on the merits. They don't, either they take me, what I say in regard, or they don't. And it's vice versa. They can come before my committee. They can speak on behalf of this. They can speak against this, and it doesn't make them subservient. It just makes us, we're able to make a better decision because we have the proper information before us.
Point well taken.
Anyone else? Okay, on Section 2. There is no amendment. Will the clerk please take the roll? Hold on one second. There was some...
Is there any discussion?
There was, the solicitor was asked to have some discussion regarding it.
If I may on this, the reason I thought I was here tonight was for this section. Section 2, the amendment basically says, "The zoning board and planning board," I don't know why the other boards and commissions, conservation commission, other commissions weren't in this ordinance, "upon closing a testimonial portion shall proceed to deliberate and vote on the matter before the beginning of the testimonial portion of the public hearing on any other matter." However, state law dictates that although the council appoints the board members, 45-24-56 specifically says, "The zoning board shall establish written rules and procedure, a mailing address to which appeals and correspondence to the zoning board of review are sent, and an office where records are filed." Clearly, state law determines that the zoning board itself can establish their own procedures for the meeting and when they take the votes. And this is, this is very important, is that 45-24-61 essentially says, "Following a public hearing, the zoning board of review shall render a decision within a reasonable period of time." And then it goes on to give the zoning board a 30-day, essentially, window to make that decision. The reason for that is important is that, for instance, a cell tower may come before the board. There may be an expert present, and that expert, they may, the zoning board may want additional information. The way this amendment is read, essentially, the meeting would have, in my mind, the meeting would have to be closed because they could no longer take the next docketed matter because they haven't voted on the docketed matter currently before them. In addition, according to state law, they don't even have to vote that night. They have a reasonable period of time. And again, because, obviously, with a deck or something small, that period of time is that night, but state law clearly contemplates that some applications can be either continued to a new hearing, or they may want to review the entire record and vote on it at the next hearing. The way this amendment reads is that if they hear a Walmart on the first, as the first application, and they wanna, and the zoning board wants to continue that, or wants to review the entire record, which is not usually brought at the zoning hearing, then they can't begin the next testimonial portion of the hearing on the next matter. So this is another thing where state law, I don't wanna say trumps city ordinance, but state law clearly says that the zoning board has the right to set their own rules and procedures, and they have, state law also contemplates that many times a decision is not rendered immediately by the zoning board. With that said, I believe that the best procedure and practice would be to vote after it's heard. It clearly makes sense, but what I'm saying is that this council or this ordinance would not be effective in making the zoning board vote the way the planning board does, which is frankly the way I would prefer.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, council president. You do know that the council, we, and the school committee vote on each matter as it comes before us?
Correct.
We don't tell the people, "Wait till midnight," or "Call back in the morning to find out the decision," right? You know that, right?
I'm not here advocating the procedure of the zoning board. I'm only here advocating, just in explaining or advocating for the way the state law is written. If you understand, in other words, I would personally prefer the way the planning board does it or the way this council does it. But all I'm saying is that, and there was actually a case, which I brought tonight, which I'll give to Mr. Quinlan, that the procedure which the zoning board does as far as hearing everything, then voting on everything, was challenged in court, and the court upheld the procedure in a 2006 Superior Court case. It wasn't a Supreme Court case, but the court upheld that procedure. So it's been upheld by the Superior Court, and the state law clearly contemplates that they have the right to conduct the meetings in the way that they do. I'm not saying I would do it, and again, I don't know if anyone has written a letter to the chairwoman to attempt to, you know, amend their procedures, but their procedures could be amended by a majority vote of the members on the council, on the zoning board.
Councilman Stychos.
Three things. First, I would very much disagree with Mr. Marolla's interpretation of the way this is worded. It says, it doesn't say that the zoning board or the planning board has to vote to reject or accept the variance being proposed. It just says they have to vote on the matter. So they could vote to continue to the next meeting. They could vote to make a decision in 20 days, but they...
They could also vote to hear it at the end of the night.
Well, that wouldn't be the intention of this, for sure. That's number one. Number two is, have you ever expressed your opinion to the zoning board about the way they handle their meetings?
Yes.
And what was their response?
Their procedure has, they've been doing it that way for 20 years. It's been held up by the Superior Court, and I'm just here to advise them as other solicitors or advise other bodies, and sometimes those bodies don't take the solicitor's advice.
All right. Well, thank you for advising or suggesting that. And the third thing is, I'd like Mr. Quinlan's view on whether this is permitted by state law.
I'm not aware of the case that Mr. Marola brought up, I will review that. I'm sorry, I keep calling it Marcella, please accept my apology.
Oh, did I do that?
But I agree with Councilman Stychos' interpretation, they could vote to continue it. And I think, you know, logically, if they wanted to review more evidence, they would be on the record saying, and the public would know at the time of the conclusion of the hearing, we're going to continue this, look at some more evidence. So I, you know, I don't see that it has to conflict with state law, but again, I have not read the case, and I would like the chance to do that.
Through the chair, so if you'd like a chance to do that, are you suggesting that we continue this? What do you...
I, how long is the case? We can come back to this, I could read the case and give you my opinion, I just have to see the case, I haven't, was not aware there was a Superior Court case on point.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Not sure how we do this procedurally, but could I suggest we go to Section 3 while Mr. Quinlan's reviewing that?
Well, we have a, we have a motion.
Well, maybe we could withdraw the motion.
At the point of order, I don't have a Section 3.
Particularly show a Section 3.
Well, the page 3, I'm sorry, page 3.
I don't have a page 3.
Actually, my copy says page 2 of 4 on the second page, I don't have any other, oh, I have the plan commission letters, is that what you're referring to?
No, we need page 3, page 4.
Apparently, excuse me, through the chair, apparently last month this happened, when we copy these packets, we feed them through the machine on the automatic feeder, and apparently it's dropping pages. And so we're, the page, there are three pages to this ordinance, and the third page has been dropped, we're copying it for you now.
Motion to get a new machine and zoning?
Mr. President, I'll go copy this page 3.
She's already done that.
Will she join, going to do this?
Yes.
Don't you not use that machine, it eats the copies on stage.
I could read it into the record if you'd like to start the conversation.
Councilor Arquette?
Thank you, Councilman Lupino. Are we still in the discussion process of Section 2, or we're in a hiatus?
No, we're in discussion.
May I, all right, thank you, Council President, appreciate that. I can't speak for Councilman Stychos, but my guess is the intent of Section 2 is basically to have some type of safeguard for the zoning board not to vote on issues midnight, 1:00, 2:00, 2:00 AM in the morning. That's my guess, am I correct, Councilman? Thank you. And I can remember, it was said by Councilman Santa Maria, that yes, I did serve six years in the General Assembly, in my freshman year, the General Assembly during budget sessions, it was a rule, we'd stay there till wee hours of the morning, we stayed there till 4:00, 4:30 in the morning, and it was very difficult on a number of issues, in those days for $300 a year. And then in '92, we instituted a rule that no new business could be heard or voted on after midnight, so it was at that hour. But I can attest to the fact that, you know, when you're deliberating at 1, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, you're not as razor sharp as you would be at 9:30 PM. So I can understand the council's intent, I hope the body will support this section. Thank you.
That's 3, and that's 4, okay. There's no page 4. That's the same thing as Section 1.
So, so Quinlan, have you, oh, I'm sorry.
I have reviewed the opinion provided to me, I don't, I respectfully disagree because I don't see that the court took that issue as one of the appealable issues. It was clear in the case decided by Judge Gibney that the zoning board in Cranston had followed its usual procedure of, you know, moving things to the end of the night, and the allegation was raised as to whether or not that violated the open meetings law. And in that, the court said that it did not, at least as I read his opinion, and I read it rather quickly, but I still don't see that it prohibits, the opinion does not prohibit requiring that they take some form of a vote at the conclusion of testimony, whether it's a vote to continue, a vote to take more testimony, a vote to admit, or a vote to deny. That's why we have judges to solve these disputes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Council President, thank you. I brought this up at the committee meeting, I don't think we're telling the zoning board how to vote, we're just asking them to consider, you know, people who have to go to work in the morning, and those decks that you mentioned, that they shouldn't have to wait till the end of the night. I don't think it's a case of us trying to usurp their authority or anything, we're just asking them, take the vote and let the person go home.
Well, one is, there's always a last person on the docket, so, and secondly is, it's just...
Well, they're all last person on the docket if you do it the way you're doing it.
It's just, again, without advocating for their procedure, just state law clearly says that the zoning board shall be able to set their own written rules of procedure. So the question becomes is, if they, if this ordinance is passed, and they continue to conduct their meetings as they do, and it was brought up on appeal, I believe that the ordinance would be struck down because state law clearly says that the zoning board shall be able to conduct their own rules of procedure. That's all I'm saying. Again, I wish they would do it the other way, but they don't.
Council President has 2 minutes.
2 minutes only. Mr. Solicitor, is this, as proposed, binding on the zoning board? Would this have binding powers on the zoning board?
In my opinion, and Solicitor Rossin, we've spoken about this, it does not, because state law specifically says they have the right to set their own procedure.
And it's my, it's always been my understanding that zoning boards are appointed by the council, not always in other cities and towns, but with an arms-length situation, that we're not supposed to really interfere with them. Anytime I've gone before the zoning board, I've spoken as a, as an individual, not as a representative of the council.
Correct, and I did check some other ordinances, not the entire state of Rhode Island. Solicitor Rossin also checked some ordinances, and we couldn't find city ordinances which dictated voting procedure on zoning boards or planning boards.
What, what would, and knowing that this couldn't be binding on them, the next question that needs to be addressed, which also would not be binding upon them, is, I've been to many zoning meetings, and they particularly, Councilman Stychos, particularly take items out of order without voting on taking them out of order. We've taken some things, or taken some liberties this evening, where we've asked the council to vote on doing certain procedures, or amending our rules, or taking something. That is not happening there. So I've gone to many meetings where someone says, "I'm second on the docket," and at 11:30, they're still sitting there, because they've taken, you know, multiple testimony from lawyers and developers and all of that. So I don't know that this is going to accomplish what you, what you may intend. And again, knowing that it's not binding on them, I don't know if I can support this.
Thank you. Councilman Navarro?
Thank you.
Council Vice President?
I really don't see, I mean, this is so complicated, asking the zoning board or however, you know, to take it after every, when they're ready to make a decision, they don't need to continue to vote on a matter at hand. But my question, my question is, state law says that the council can't tell them how to do their proceedings? Is that, or the state law said that they have the ability to do their...
They, they themselves, the zoning board shall establish a written rules of procedure. They also do something which very few towns do, is they take old business last. So you would think if your application was pending in December and it continued to January, that you would go first. But they take it, essentially, you go at the bottom of the docket. So those are procedures that have been set by the zoning board, which, again, as long as they conform to state law, you know, aren't discriminatory, have their open meetings, you know, all, you know, all those specific...
Right. I follow that, that state law lets them create their own rules and regs and procedures. My question is, where does state law say that the council can't put, pass an ordinance to tell them how to, you know, the way we want them to do their business?
Because it specifically says, "The board," meaning the zoning board, shall establish the written rules of procedure, not the, in the other parts of the statute, it specifically says, you know, "City councils shall appoint five members, alternate members, set the terms," but it clearly says that the board sets the procedures.
All right. And the only, excuse me, the oversight that the city council does have is, you know, if there's some vacancies or some, you know, board members has done something illegal and they want that board member removed, the city council obviously could come in and remove a board member for criminality, something like that, but it doesn't, it doesn't give them your normal, I would say, general procedures, rules of procedure. So will we be contradicting state law? Is that what you're saying, if we pass this section?
I don't think it would have any force or effect.
If we pass it?
It wouldn't be, in my opinion, and Solicitor Rossin's opinion, which he would give a negative recommendation to, it wouldn't have any, not only the zoning board, planning board, conservation commission, it just wouldn't, it wouldn't be binding on them, they could continue to operate the way they've operated.
All right, and just lastly, so basically, let's just say that...
And I don't have page 3, by the way, so I don't even know what's on that.
All right, well, I'm not, I'm just, no, I'm looking at the one we're talking about. So basically, if we, if this city council today decides to pass this ordinance, from hearing from you, legal counsel, and the mayor's office, you represent the mayor as well on this, or, I mean, your opinion is that it'd be a negative opinion?
Correct. I've already spoken to Solicitor Rossin on that.
So the mayor would veto, would veto this?
I don't, I haven't spoken to the mayor, I've only spoken to Solicitor Rossin on it.
But the opinion would be a negative opinion?
A negative opinion, on the second section.
On the second section.
Not on the first section.
Yeah, on the second section. Yeah, on the second, I follow.
On the second section, which is why, which is why there's, we're taking a bifurcated vote, and why the plan commission set a negative recommendation for the second section, but not for the first section.
Now, this ordinance is also talking about the planning board? Oh, the planning board already does that, right? They vote after each, after each hearing?
Correct, yeah, they vote after, after each matter.
All right.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Steve, you weren't at the committee meeting, but there was some telling testimony from the head of the Chamber of Commerce. I don't know if anyone from the zoning board was at them, I don't think they were, but some of these small businesses and people are paying, I don't know how much does a zoning lawyer make an hour, and they have to stay for the whole meeting. It's cost prohibitive for some of the small businesses. Now, we all talk about how we want to help the small businesses. If they have to have a lawyer sit around and wait for four hours for a decision to be made that can be made at 8:00 rather than midnight, this four hours worth of lawyer's fees. You know, he spoke for this because of the effect it would have on small businesses.
Again, I'm not advocating for their procedure. I'm just, you know, stating what the effect, in our opinion, what the effect of the ordinance would be on the zoning board, which, in our opinion, they wouldn't be in effect.
Councilman Stychos?
Just to ask, again, to be clear, council solicitor, if you agree with the opinion that we're not allowed to do this under state law?
Let's split the question, not whether we're allowed to do it, but whether or not the zoning board has to obey that, given the state law sets their procedures. I was not aware of their opinion until today on this matter. I, you know, I think that they have a good argument that this is procedural, and I think, I'll make, if I might make a suggestion, that we spoke about a minute ago, is one way to clear that up, to convey the clear opinion that this council has, that they should vote and make a determination matter by matter before moving on to the next one. There are alternative ways of getting there other than an ordinance, and, you know, the point that the solicitor made, it's a serious point, is to, is this a procedure? And I think a court could construe it to be a procedure. And again, I'm not a zoning lawyer, and Steve is.
Councilman Favickio?
Thank you, Council President. One quick thing, I don't know that this is going to serve the purpose that you intended, Councilman Stychos, because if what I'm hearing is correct from Mr. Marcella, he is putting the old business on at the end of the calendar anyway, so...
Well, yeah, in other words, there's certain procedures that the zoning board does in this city that, while procedurally and legally correct, may not be potentially as business-friendly or as public-friendly as possible, but they are legally correct, and that's the way, and I think, as Mr. Quinlan said, maybe the proper method would be a, potentially a resolution or a joint letter to the zoning board, or a meeting with the zoning board. I don't know how they would react to any of that, but obviously, in the form of the ordinance, wouldn't get the desired effect of what, it sounds like a majority of the people are trying to do here.
I mean, I have sat through some of those midnight meetings in progress, and it is difficult, not that the clients always can afford to pay their lawyers to stay there until midnight.
Why are you looking at me?
Yes, you're concerned about that, and you're right, you're right. I'm just not sure that this is the way, this is...
Okay, I think everyone had a chance to speak more than several times. Look, please take the roll on Section 2.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 No.
No, that section stays intact before the, before the additions on 85 to 88. Section 3, I'll contain a motion.
So moved.
The motion? Second for discussion. Councilman Stychos?
Same amendments.
Yes. This is exactly the same as the first section, except it deals with the planning commission and not the zoning commission. So I would move to amend this in the same way, to take out the city council. So that would be in line 93, to take out the words "the city council" and the period. Then change in line 94, the capital T to a small t... Then change in line ninety-four, the capital T to a small t, and add the word "who" after clerk. So the, again, the effect of this, if I could get a second?
Second.
Okay, that's, that was in the form of a motion to amend, and it's a second, under discussion. Solicitor Marcello?
Yeah, if I may, because I was just reading this, and sorry to jump up like that. But in the last portion, why is the, the planning commission, why is "and" the zoning code of the city of Cranston added to the, to the planning commission's oath? The oath in and of itself is, that, again, just seeing this right now.
I don't, that would be, I think, a question directed to Mr. Quinlan, who drafted this.
I apologize. I believe the intent of putting that in there after, when we spoke with the sponsor, was that he wanted to make sure that the planning commission had their eye on the ball, also looking at the zoning code and making their interpretations. That was the intent for putting it in, at least.
Yeah, I guess if you're gonna, the, the planning board essentially, although they do deal with zoning issues, only has a advisory role on the zoning issues. And so, and essentially, they should be upholding the, the planning ordinances also. Planning and zoning, so you should add planning to that.
So, I'm sorry, you're not speaking loud enough for me to hear.
Either, either that last sentence should be struck for "and" zoning code of the city of Cranston, or the, it should read to the effect of uphold the zoning and planning code of the city of Cranston. Because really, their, their main binding effect is with the, with the planning code, not really with the, their zoning code is only advisory.
Why don't I withdraw my motion, and we'll start again? Okay. Make a motion that we remove the words "the" city council from line ninety-three and the period. Remove the capital on line ninety-four, remove the capital T, and add the word "who" after clerk.
Point and order, there was, the second wasn't withdrawn, so I permit the second. He did.
Okay. Line ninety-four, remove the capital T, make it a small t, add the word "who" after clerk. And on line ninety-seven, after the word zoning, add "and" planning.
Second. There's no discussion on, on the section three as amended?
Yes, section, the amendment to section three, excuse me.
Clerk, please take the roll.
Counselor Mulchell?
Yes.
Counsel Stychos?
Yes.
Counsel Barrow?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
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 Yes. On section three as amended?
Clerk, please take the roll.
Any, but discussion? Take the roll?
No.
We're in, we're in the middle of a vote. Attention.
Yes.
Counsel Barrow?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
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 Yes.
Just for the record, I thought that was a very quick vote, and I think the president should view the council chamber for anyone who wants to add anything. Take the roll. There is no section four.
No, but.
No, I'm waiting for the, I'm waiting for the chair on ordinance.
Oh, you gotta announce it, twelve eleven five. You gotta announce it.
Next ordinance is twelve eleven five, ordinance to the amendment of Title V, Chapter IV, the Code of City of Cranston, two thousand and five, Business Licenses and Regulations, Radius Maps for Notification of Butters, this past ordinance committee foias and no nays.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and second, any, any discussion?
No.
There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Counsel Barrow?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Counsel Barrow?
How come I get called on orders?
Yes.
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 Yes. Claims committee.
Counsel President?
Counsel Stychos?
Counsel President?
Excuse me, yes.
Before we continue, I'm going to recuse myself from a vote on claims. One of the people is a personal friend of the family. Out of abundance of caution, I recuse myself.
You can do that if you like. I mean, unless it's a relative, but it doesn't come under the recusal rules, but you'll have to fill out the form. Counsel Stychos?
These settlements listed here have been approved by the claims committee, and they're here for notification purposes.
Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Counsel Mulchell?
Yes.
Counsel Stychos?
Yes.
Counsel Barrow?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
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 Yes.
Counsel Favickia?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Yes. Public hearings, are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any undocumented items? Please state your name and address, and you're allowed four minutes.
Diana Gordon, three sixty-three Pontiac Avenue. I've heard a lot of concern, I'm concerned about what we're doing to little business and big business. I've been to a couple of meetings lately, have missed a couple. But it seems that we're not nice to business here in Cranston. We push them away, we don't give them a chance to speak. This happened with Walmart, they weren't allowed to speak. The manager wanted to speak and he wasn't allowed. Here we have another business that wants to come in here. Now, these are revenues that are needed here. And there's kind of a balance. I'm, I have a business and I also am a resident, and I've had problems with a business making too much impact on my area, and I did something about it. But there has to be a balance. Right now, things are good within that business and myself, and I'm looking at these other businesses that come in. You were right, Pelletier, when you said you should get together, the business and the people, and have them speak. And, you know, because that's the only way that you can, it's a balance. It's a fine balance. If you push business away, you don't have any money to run the city, because you just don't get enough from the people. You get it from the businesses. And that's all I really have to say. You guys have to make your judgments on the final impact of everything, but, you know, you have to balance it. That's all. Thank you.
Good evening, Paul Volad, President of the Cranston Firefighters. Sorry I had to speak, but I know you want to get out of here, but you passed a resolution tonight that's very concerning to, to the firefighters, to me in particular. I guess I can speak on this, this resolution tonight, because in the last three years, the firefighters have come to the city and have given back in excess of five million dollars while we were in the middle of a contract, so we didn't have to come to the table. And, and these negotiations, we sat down with the mayor, Mr. Strom and his staff. We didn't need lawyers, we didn't need consulting firms. But you passed a resolution tonight to bring a consulting firm in to give you suggestions for the next year's budget. I sat through last year's budget when this council and this administration probably had to do, put a budget together in the worst economic times any of us have seen since the recession. And I saw the hard work and the tough decisions made by the administration and this council. You had to make tough cuts places you didn't want to make. Everybody hopes there was money to go around for everybody, but there wasn't. And we know tough cuts had to be made. And I think everybody in this room agrees, the firefighters have come to the table in these tough economic times, because we understand the problem, and we are part of the community, and we want to help you. But when we see a resolution put forward tonight, that this council passed unanimously, to bring in a consulting firm from Boston, another consulting firm that we have to pay for from out of state, so we're going to bring another company in here that's going to make money off Cranston. Now, I can tell you, if that consulting firm was in, in Cranston, when we came in to make our concessions, we would have been very hesitant to give you in excess of five million dollars, when we knew that five hundred thousand of that would be going to the Berkshire Company. Because if I heard correctly, they get ten percent of any savings that the city would garner. You don't need a consulting firm to come in here. That's your job, that's why you were elected, that's why you ran, to make those tough decisions. And you did a fabulous job last year, as did the administration. So you don't need another consulting firm coming in here and taking money away from the Cranston residents. So I would like you to, to reconsider that resolution. I just got a copy, it's my fault, but I just got a copy of the resolution, and some of it doesn't make sense to me. One of the reasons you need a consulting firm is because of the budgetary shortfalls that the pension reform mandates have caused. We heard the general treasurer saying you're going to make money because of these, these budget, these pension changes that were made. And as Councilman Arquette said, nothing's for free, when he asked the sponsor of the bill how much it would cost for this company to come in. And I guess the initial, the initial presentation coming before this council at the finance meeting would be free. Nothing's for free. So just be careful when they come in and make their free presentation, that if they officially make a presentation to you at a, at a finance meeting, that somewhere down the line, if one of the suggestions they make happens to be one of the concessions you get from one of the unions you'll be bargaining with, that they won't be coming on the, knocking on the door. And I would hope there would be some kind of RFP before any consulting firm came before even any committee, like the finance committee, just to sit down and talk. I don't think that this, this Berkshire Company should just be free to come in here and give you a presentation without an RFP. So that's my spiel. It's very disheartening that, that this would even come before this council, that, that you would need a consulting firm to come in here and help you. I'm giving you more credit than the councilman's given you. I think you did a great job last year, and I'm one of the people that have sat through many budget sessions in this chamber, probably more than anybody in this room. And I think you and the administration did a great job in tough economic times. And I don't know how the administration stands on this resolution. I'd be quite surprised to learn that Mayor Fung would want a consulting firm coming in here telling him how to negotiate. Thank you.
Valerie Shuley, twenty-seven Farm Street, Cranston, Rhode Island. I had no intention of speaking tonight, but then, as I witnessed, somewhere along this meeting, I wasn't sure if I was in city council chambers or Never Never Land. I, I had to check and see. And wonderful things go on at the committee meetings. I fully believe you need the committee meetings, but it is not the full council, it is not where the vote should be taken. That needs to go before the full council. On every committee is not every person that represents every ward. And we elected a full council, and we've done that for a reason. And when you've been here as long as I have, I've been here sitting in that seat back there longer than some of you have been on the council. Most of you have been on the council now. And I've seen some strange things happen between the committee meeting and the council meeting. I've seen decisions turn on a dime, I've seen them go either way, I've seen one person show up at the committee meeting and go out to the people and say, "Do you know what's happening? Come to the council meeting with me." That's government at work. And I'm still struggling to figure out how the stay house is an example of any way, shape or form that we should follow of good government. When I came here, I was told about the stay house, the good old boys, and all of that. And I believe the good old boys came from the committees, where they think everything should happen before it gets to the floor. And so, I would hope that we want to set the example, not go by what is not, is questionable as good government. Thank you.
Anyone else on an undocumented item? There being none. Election of city officials? To the juvenile hearing board, Pamela Schiff, alternate reappointment.
Motion approved.
Second. Does the motion a second? Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Cranston Public Library Board of Trustees, Rosemary De Silva, who would be completing the unexpired term of Frank A. Martinaro. And just, Fred Miller is on here just as information, because that was previously approved by the council, and there's no action needed on Mr. Miller. So we would be approving Rosemary De Silva.
Yes.
Any discussion? There being none, take the roll.
Counsel Mulchell?
Yes.
Counsel Stychos?
Yes.
Counsel Barrow?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Yes. Favickia?
Yes.
Favickia?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. To the zoning board review, Craig Norcliff. Motion approved. Motion a second. Any discussion? There being none, take the roll.
Counsel Mulchell?
Yes.
Counsel Stychos?
Yes.
Counsel Barrow?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Favickia?
Yes.
Favickia?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Lori Carlino, reappointment as second alternate.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Counsel Mulchell?
Yes.
Counsel Stychos?
Yes.
Counsel Barrow?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Counsel Favickia?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Counsel Haddad?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, reporters, city officers, any reports?
I have none.
Executive communications. Mr. Cordy?
Thank you, Council President. Cranston Fire Department Deputy Chief Jeffrey Walls requests to be placed on pension. Deputy Chief Wall has met all the criteria, and we encourage you to approve.
Motion denied. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Motion approve.
Second.
Does the motion a second? Discussion?
This request, wasn't this on the agenda last month?
No.
This is the first time this has ever come before us?
It was continued last month. It's continued last month. It was, no, that's right, it was not on, this is the first time.
This was the first time. We've been trying to count. We've given them two pensions.
No, I just, I, I thought we already approved a, a retirement.
Just to, just to clarify, Deputy Wall had been on last year for a continuance to, to stay on the ranks, because he had reached the retirement age, and he had, he had asked to stay on the ranks.
This is the first time this has ever come before us?
It was continued last month.
It's continued last month. Yeah. No, that's right, it was not on, this is the first time.
This was the first time. They've been trying to call.
Giving them two pensions.
No, I just, I thought we already approved a retirement.
Just to, just to clarify, Deputy Wall had been on last year for a continuance to stay on the ranks because he had reached the retirement age and he had, he had asked to stay on the ranks. That occasionally happens, you may see someone on a year before because they're asking to continue to stay in the ranks for another year.
Right, okay, no, I just thought this might have been before us last month and placed on pension. I didn't know if this is, this is the first time this is before us? Okay.
Yes, sir. No other discussion, please take the roll.
Hassan Mouchian, yes. Hassan Saicos.
Yes.
Hassan Barrow.
Yes.
Hassan Anha.
Yes.
Yes.
Vidya.
Yes.
Hassan Anha.
Yes. Yes. Report on hiring special counsel consultants. Are there any reports on that?
No, sir.
Tax Policy Review Commission, we've got an appointment, I guess, from the mayor?
Yes, it's the mayor's appointment of a resident, Mr. Mark Collins.
Any discussion on Mr. Collins? There's no vote needed on that. And you have some settled legal claims? Anybody discussing the settled legal claims?
Any questions on that claim or?
No. You knew what that was.
Under, uh, under Council President Communications, uh, my appointments to the Tax Policy Review Commission will be George David and Peter Spinelli. Councilman Arquette. Councilman Arquette, this, uh, this is what you've been at, so your, your Tax Policy Review Commission is, is fully? The Tax Policy Review Commission, all the members have been appointed now. Cranston Historical Cemeteries Commission, John Baxter. And, uh, the landfill odor issue, an administrative update, I did hear from Carlos Lopez and there has been no new update since the, the update. And I believe all the council people have received the communication via email regarding the odors and the, uh, we've been advised by the health department that there are no inherent, uh, health risks. Physical health risks. They did allude to some mental health risks from smelling that stuff, but there's been no update since then. Already a reappointment? Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Hurricane cleanup, I'd like to push to next month, please. I'm still going over some details with, uh, Mr. Cordy, so I'll push that till next month, please. If there's no objections.
Yeah, that's, that's okay, we don't need a vote on that, that's just, you know, your communication, so.
And then Walmart administration report, um, I do have a ordinance going in, new introductions, hopefully to address this problem. Jerry Wanda, do you want to speak or?
Uh, it's up to you, Captain.
About what?
I put an ordinance in.
All right, the ordinance is here on the new business, so we're not discussing that.
Correct. I just, I'd like to get an update on, well, I'll let Jerry tell you, he's been speaking to me of what, what the update is with the property owner in Walmart, if possible.
At the last subcommittee meeting, they did ask for an update on, uh, on the vans and the campers and the tractor trailers that were parked out in that area. I asked the police department to look into it after hours. Uh, they were able to find the same conditions that we had discussed. Uh, as a result of that, they came back to me with a suggestion that perhaps maybe what we need to do is think in terms of meeting with Walmart and/or the developer himself who owns the property from the standpoint that if, uh, if the police department were to start ticketing these, for example, the tractor trailers for the pollution, um, state law, which is the only thing they really had to go on at that point in time. By this time tomorrow afternoon, they'll be in Des Moines, Iowa, so it would be an exercise in futility. And they felt maybe a little bit neighborhood policing may be, uh, more in order as far as trying to address these issues. Uh, they did set up a meeting with the manager of Walmart and also the developer, and I don't have that exact date, but it was about two weeks ago that they did meet. Unfortunately, the developer did not participate in that meeting, uh, we don't know why yet. And, uh, the manager of the Walmart firm was very cooperative and he also wanted to put a stop to the other things that we were talking about, including, uh, the overnight parking by tractor trailers as well as campers. Unfortunately, one of the things that the police department did notice and also the Walmart manager pointed out, that those vehicles were not parked in the area where Walmart is. They were parked in the area where the empty property or the empty business is located. And Walmart really has no control over that parking lot itself. So it really does sound much more like it's a property management or a property owner issue than it does Walmart itself. And one of the things the police department was wanting to talk to not only Walmart, but also the developer on, was getting some more signage up on the property so that people knew when they pulled in that overnight parking was not, not to be tolerated. Um, we had another meeting scheduled, which we anticipated the developer to sit in on, and at the last minute we found he wasn't coming again. So that's my update. As far as the trash goes, uh, building inspection did reach out to the developer and he agreed to get out there and clean up the trash that was on the perimeter of the property that was blowing across and getting caught in the buffer areas. Whether or not that was done before the snow fell, I don't know. Soon as the snow melts, we'll take another look and see if they did accomplish that yet.
Can I just, uh, ask one question? The lighting issue, and I went over the site plan review again, and it specifically states and in the ordinance that lighting's not supposed to be shining into neighbors' houses. Neighbors still insist that the, the lighting is shining into their houses. Obviously, it probably, it happens at nighttime when no one's working, so they can show it to people, but, um, can we, can we take a look at that again? Obviously, the light's on during the daytime, so can we again look at that? It's specific, yeah, specifically states in the site plan review, the lighting will not, you know, shine into the kitchens of the houses in the back. And it still is.
There's, there's two things on that issue. One, which was suggested by Council President last time, that, uh, last time we spoke to this, uh, that did make some sense on the surface, so we did look into it. And he suggested perhaps it may be loading dock lighting or something of that nature that is not the parking lot area, which I was assuming from the get-go, that the concerns of the neighbors were associated with. Uh, we didn't find anything on the parking dock area that may be contributing to what the neighbors are concerned about. Uh, and we stated here before that the lamping in the parking lot area themselves met all the criteria that was put down by the plan commission. So therefore, again, we're pretty well stein beat as far as what we can and can't do.
Mr. Cordy, just before you leave the podium there, uh, I'm not aware that Walmart has designated parking spaces there. I've never been in that parking lot, and I don't go to Walmart a lot, but I've been there a lot lately monitoring the situation. And I've never seen the parking lot dedicated saying that this is a Walmart parking space and this one is not. It's the whole complex. They've expanded their business, uh, I don't know how many square feet that we approved, and my assumption is that the parking lot's the parking lot. It's the parking lot where the Walmart is, among other businesses. So, uh, the manager's full of crap when he says that that's not his parking lot. It is, it is their parking lot that they pay for whatever their leasehold is on the, on the building. So, um, that I don't buy at all. It's their parking lot, so they got to do something about it. That, he's, he's also the same manager that told me that, um, even though it was their trash, it wasn't their property to go pick up the trash at. And all I suggested was putting a fence up to stop the trash from going on the property because it, it was their trash, it's from their parking lot, it's from their customers. The other question I have, Jerry, is what did you mean by community policing? You used that term, community policing. What would that, what's that involve? You said that we could solve the problem through community policing.
First, I'd like to address, uh, your statement in regards to allocated parking. I never suggested that there was any Walmart allocated parking. What I was suggesting is that the vehicles that were parked there, that are the subject of this conversation, weren't parked in front of Walmart. They were parked in front of the empty building that is on the property, on the same property. Secondly, as far as who actually owns and/or controls that parking lot, I don't know. I can suspect, like any of us can, that it's a triple net lease and the, because the parking lot is shared by other businesses, even though the businesses are empty, it's a communal parking lot. So therefore, I would suggest that Walmart has very little control over that lot. Now, secondly, when it comes to the community policing, it's a concept that the police department has been very effective with, uh, throughout the city in regards to sitting down with the egregious people involved in a situation and trying to reach a resolution that everybody can live with.
So, uh, myself, Councilman Santa Maria, have been up there quite a few times. Uh, I've got pictures on my phone right now, if you care to see them, of campers and, uh, portable generators. There's people living there, people living in the parking lot.
Councilman, I have pictures too, and I've seen it myself.
I've reported it more than several times to, per our, our protocol, to Carlos Lopez. And I still, I've, I've asked for backup reports. Uh, he said they would send minimum housing out there and, um, now I'm, now I'm getting to the point where I'm, I'm asking for the, instead of just an email back saying that they went out to something, I'm asking for formal reports. So, uh, and I think Councilman Santa Maria feels the same way. We need something in writing now, but we, we, we believe that they're going out, but I don't want just an answer back saying that there's just an email saying, "Well, we went out to visit the site and, you know, we, we saw what was going on." I want, I want to see some actual reports on what's going on.
If you could give me some specifics as to what you'd like to see in the reports, we'll see to it that you get them going forward.
Particularly what action can be taken. We need to know what.
That's an excellent question that we have the solicitor dealing with right now. This is private property.
May I ask, may I ask, uh, make a request, Council President? I'm guessing this is going to go before ordinance. Can we have, can we get the property owner and Walmart at the meeting? Matter of fact, I really, I really requested the property owner be at the committee meeting. Or we can go show cause at the safety service. I'd rather go to ordinance because there is an ordinance, but I request that Walmart be there too. I don't know if we can.
I, I, yeah, I, I agree, and it's getting late. I don't want to argue the point, Mr. Cordy, but, uh, private property for Walmart, private property for the developer, private property for the property owner, it's no different than my private property. If I, if I had five or six campuses parked on my front lawn, you would definitely do something about it. So, um, I don't take that argument about it being private property. It's, uh, it's, it's the city of Cranston and they should adhere to the codes, the minimum housing code.
Tony.
Yes, uh, Councilman Pelletier. I have some, uh, Councilman Communications, um, just for the record, I, my residence was not the Walmart parking lot, just for the record. Secondly, um, I, I need a status update on the Natick Ave Bridge. We are in winter and I have not seen any completion date.
That was a good one.
Been released by the mayor's office, Jerry? I'm sorry, Jerry.
The Natick Avenue Bridge is only lacking at this point a pedestrian railing. We can't open the bridge without the pedestrian railing. And the other thing that's missing, and again, this is weather related, is, uh, the, the painting of the road. The pavement's done.
Pavement's done?
Pavement's done.
It's got a, a top deck on it and everything?
Everything's done except for the pedestrian railing and the painting of the pavement. Uh, just exactly how long it's going to take for the pedestrian railing, I don't know. Last we heard, it was three weeks away from being delivered, which is causing us some consternation because that should have been anticipated and ordered earlier. But be that as it may, this is what we're looking at at this point.
It's a good job, Jerry. Thank you very much for your help on that. Anyone else on the communications? Councilman Steikos?
Uh, quickly for, for Mr. Cordy, uh, we received a, uh, I think the council members received a letter from, that was sent to the mayor from the firefighters' union, saying that they had offered to sit down and discuss the, uh, private Cranston firefighters' pension fund and hadn't heard back from the mayor. I just wondered if there was any comment you could make on this?
I can make two comments. The first one is, what is the date on the letter?
January 17th.
And my second comment is, I have not personally seen it, but I will check to see if the mayor has received it.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Strom would like to address that issue.
Councilman Steikos, uh, just to continue on your question, I think one of the things that the mayor was waiting to do, and I'm only, this is my assumption, I haven't discussed it with him. As you know, there was state pension reform, there's also further discussion for city pension reform. Uh, I think he'd like to see how that develops, if it does develop, hopefully to our favor, or at least gives us the ability to do certain things similar to what the state's doing. And until we have that, um, uh, addressed by the state, which is ongoing right now, in fact, he's going to a commission meeting on Wednesday and I'm going to CCRI tomorrow morning to meet with the treasurer. Until we formulate how we feel this is going to develop, I think he was waiting, uh, you know, to have a discussion with the union. And that's my, that's my opinion. Uh, I don't know for sure because I haven't discussed it, as I said, with the mayor. But we, you know, he, we are being proactive, hoping that the state gives us the ability and tools to, to do things on a local level similar to what they've done on a state level.
Anyone else? Any old business?
There is none. Well, actually, I think there is. No, that's actually miscellaneous business, the conservation he's meant.
Okay, introduction of new business.
The following ordinances are to be referred to Safety Services for hearing on February 6th. Proposed ordinance 1-12-1, in amendment of Title 10, for motor vehicles in traffic for Macbeth Street at Burr Street. Proposed ordinance 1-12-2, in amendment of Title 10, motor vehicles in traffic for Burr Street southbound at Macbeth. Proposed ordinance 1-12-3, in amendment of Title 10, motor vehicles in traffic for a crosswalk on Garfield Avenue. Proposed ordinance 1-12-04, in amendment of Title 8, entitled Health and Safety, a ban on discounted tobacco products. Proposed ordinance 1-12-5, in amendment of Title 8, entitled Health and Safety, a ban on flavored tobacco products. Proposed ordinance 1-12-7, in amendment of Title 15, entitled Building and Construction, a ban on overnight camping for retail properties. Proposed ordinance 1-12-6, in amendment of Chapter 17, entitled Zoning, a zone change for Fletcher Avenue. We have the following resolutions. Resolution support of reinstating the 50-50 sidewalk repair program to be referred to Public Works for hearing on February 16th. Resolution urging the municipal court to vigorously enforce existing minimum housing laws and impose penalties for violations to be referred to the ordinance committee for hearing on February 16th. We have a joint pole location request from National Grid and Verizon for a location on Old Sitchewett Avenue. And we have the following new claims to be referred to the Claims Committee for hearing on February 6th. Janet Gamba, uh, property damage claim to a motor vehicle for an alleged incident on January 6th. The claim says 2011, I suspect that's an error and it's actually 2012. Linda Markowitz, uh, motor vehicle property damage claim for an alleged incident. Linda Markowitz, motor vehicle property damage claim for an alleged incident on December 1st, 2011. A personal injury claim from Patricia Quirk for an alleged incident on December 10th, 2011. We need a motion on those to be referred.
Is that it? Is that it, clerk?
I have some additional late business for the council to accept and refer. Would you like me to read all of that together?
Sure.
Okay. The following, these are resolutions that I had emailed the council about that were, came in late because they were being drafted by bound counsel. Loan order resolution authorizing the issuance of 530,000 bonds to the city to finance the purchase of Public Works and highway equipment and construction of a sole storage facility. Authorizing the city to apply for federal and state advances for that purpose. Authorizing the issue of 530,000 temporary notes for that purpose and authorizing advances from the general treasury for that purpose. It's to be referred to the Finance Committee for hearing on February 16th. Resolution for loan order authorizing the issuance of 4,335,000 bonds of the city to finance the acquisition, construction, and rehabilitation of fire stations and facilities and the purchase of equipment for the fire department. Authorizing the city to apply for federal and state advances for that purpose. Authorizing the issue of 4,335,000 temporary notes for that purpose and authorizing advances from the general treasury for that purpose. Again, for hearing before the Finance Committee on February 16th. As are the next two resolutions. Resolution for loan order authorizing the issuance of 6,300,000 bonds of the city to finance the construction and equipment of a new fire station in the western part of the city of Cranston and the repair, renovation, and improvement of existing fire stations throughout the city of Cranston. Authorizing the city to apply for federal and state advances for that purpose. Authorizing the issuance of 6,300,000 temporary notes for that purpose and authorizing advances from the general treasury for that purpose. Resolution for a loan order authorizing the issuance of 6 million dollars in bonds of the city to finance the repair, construction, and rehabilitation of drainage improvements and the remediation and mitigation of drainage and flooding problems throughout the city of Cranston. Authorizing the city to apply for federal and state advances for that purpose and authorizing the issue of 6 million dollars temporary notes for that purpose and authorizing advances from the general treasury for that purpose.
Is there a motion to accept the new business to committees as stated by the clerk?
So move.
Does a motion a second? Clerk, please take the roll.
Hassan Mushiana?
Yes.
Hassan Saicos?
Yes.
Hassan Barrow?
Yes.
Hassan Haddad?
Yes.
Hassan Vivia?
Yes.
Yes. Miscellaneous business on the clerk's desk.
In regards to the conservation easement for 684 Natick Avenue, the money has not yet come down from the federal government. As soon as it does, it will be closed and consummated.
The city council's next regular monthly meeting will be held on Monday, February 27th, 2012, at 7:00 PM. Entertainer motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.